...County, and before we call our meeting to order, I'd like to ask for y'all to stand. And Matt Memes, if you will, lead us in the prayer and the pledge, please.
All right. Just bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity to come out and do your work and to do the county's work, Lord. Please pray for all of the men and women in our armed services, Lord. Having some tough times every day that we don't know about, Lord. We'll never know what they actually go through unless you've been there. Please pray for our men and women in EMT and fire prevention and paramedics and all the things we're struggling with in this county, Lord. All these things, we pray in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Salute. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a considered republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Matt. Thanks, guys. All right, guys, we'll call our August 10th Chilton County Commission meeting to order. And Ms. Sylvia, if you will, make note that we do have a quorum, but at the current time, Mr. Darrell Bone is not present. He is working a wreck somewhere locally, and we hope that he joins us.
He'll be here in five minutes.
He's gonna try to join us, so we may want to amend the attendance record to reflect it if he does get here. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the agenda? And do we have any additions or deletions?
As far as I know, we have the one addition, and that's to reclassify Steve Robertson in the Transit Department to supervisor with his pay increase.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition.
Say it.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes dated July the 27th? And if so, could I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Make a motion where you approve the minutes from dated July 27th, 2021.
Say it. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Have you had an opportunity to review the claims dated August the 10th? And if so, could I get a motion to pay the bills?
I'll make a motion we pay the bills for August 10th, 2021.
Say it. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Abstain.
Let the record reflect, Mr. Williams abstains. Motion carries. And we'll move down to the public comments section. Ms. Windsor?
Yes.
If you'd like to come to the podium, please.
This is Marty Galizino, my partner. Here with the Alabama Mineral Springs. I'm Diana Windsor, and we're here to discuss the road issue that has come to the forefront. Anyone?
Okay, just to explain to the public what's going on, these guys are moving to the Mineral Springs area, and they're gonna put a water bottling facility there. And so, there's been a little bit of concern from the community about the existing road and how it's gonna handle the additional traffic. And we met with these guys earlier with the IDA, and they explained to us what their road plan was. Commissioner Hardy asked them to come on here tonight to share it with the public so that it could go out on our Facebook Live feed and on WKLL for those members of the community that are not here tonight.
Sounds great. Okay, so what we currently are doing, we're going to have a merge lane coming from 187 onto Highway 51. I have a professional engineer who is working on the drawings as we speak with the elevations of this merge lane and widening County Road 187 from 51 to our gate. That's approximately two tenths of a mile. It goes off of Highway 51, down 187. So, we are going to put signage on 187 that the trucks are not allowed to go any further past our road, which it would be difficult. 187 is a small road. But from our gate up to 51, it's going to be redone, paved, wide enough for an 18-wheeler and a car. And the merge lane is gonna make it a lot safer, because if you're familiar with 187, 51, you look, you're 187, you look at 51, and it's, it tops a hill right here. So, we're gonna have a merge lane that will get the trucks and the general public, you know, to be sheltered from speeder coming right over 51. So, there's gonna be signage on Highway 8. Unfortunately, Google Maps has never been out here, and they feel the best way to come to our facility is down Highway 8 and then down Highway...
County Road 187.
County Road 187, which is ridiculous. But nevertheless, if you Google how to get there, that's what it tells you to do. So, we are working with Google as we speak. And there will be signage on Highway 51 right before Road 8 saying Alabama Mineral Springs Water is arrows this way. On Highway 51, on the other side of the hill, there's gonna be a 24-hour flashing sign that says trucks entering to get in people's minds that, hey, you know, there's, there could be a truck, I better keep it on the speed limit. So, we are doing everything that we possibly can to make it safe for our community by what I said, widening Highway 187, putting the merge lane on Highway 51, the flashing sign, trucks entering, the signage here, Mineral Springs ahead, and the sign that's gonna be right at our gate, you know, no trucks to the right. I mean, you can see Highway 51 from our gate, so you, that will be the most obvious path to take. So, that's what we're gonna do, and we understand there was a little confusion going on. There was also confusion about having tours a couple, two years ago when we started this project. One of my investors thought it'd be nice if we had tours, you know, so people could see how the bottling was made, and this, and it sounds good on paper, but it's a hazard to have people right in the facility, so we called that off. And Diana is currently gathering up video interviews with the locals. We have a lot of locals that their grandparents used to work there. I mean, there's a lot of history, you know, in Mineral Springs. So, we're gonna have a virtual tour, and you could come in, you could go to the website anytime you want and see, you know, hear the different individuals, you know, that their grandfather used to work there. One of my investors, his uncle used to sell yellow root to Dr. Wahoo, you know. So, I mean, there's just history that's, it's full of history, you know. So, we want the best for, for the community, and so that's, I'm hoping that that puts some of the...
Discomfort to ground.
Yes.
Great. Well, thank you, guys, and it, you know, makes me feel better to know that y'all wanna be responsible members of the community by, by putting so much time and effort into what you are doing there to make sure that it is safe, and we welcome y'all to Chilton County.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we'll move down to the department reports, and I'll ask the sheriff to come up, please.
Sorry about that.
How are you, sir?
Doing good, gentlemen. How y'all tonight?
Good, good.
Tonight, we'd like to ask for a resolution. Tyler Smith is graduating the academy and just changing his pay as stated.
I'll make a resolution to adjust our pay for Tyler Smith, showing attachment effective August 21st, 2021.
Say it.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. That was easy.
That was easy.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
All right, we'll move down to the staff reports. Ms. Sylvia, if you would, please.
The Central Alabama Wellness nominations and appointments, this is their third meeting, so I will ask for any more nominations, if there are any. The current nominations are to reappoint Terry Cornell, reappoint Matt Memes, and appoint Sylvia Singleton.
Do we have any other nominations?
We have closed nominations.
Say it.
We have a motion and a second to close nominations. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I now request a resolution to appoint some, appoint these three to the Central Alabama Wellness.
We appoint Terry Cornell, Matt Memes, and Sylvia Singleton, Central Alabama Wellness Board.
Say it.
We have a motion and a second. Did you get that second in the queue? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? You can, it's up to you. You're not paid, so you don't have to. You can vote for yourself. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
That's it for me.
Okay. What about the resolution to pay the bills?
Oh, I'm sorry. Resolution to, I didn't say, I missed that one. Resolution to pay the bills that may be delinquent before our next meeting, which is September 14th.
Okay.
Make that, make that resolution that we pay the bills that are due before our next meeting on September the...
14th.
14th?
Say it. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, that concludes you. Mr. Tony, our county engineer, please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My first order of business, I would like to have a resolution to accept the resignation of James Johnson and Blake Goggins. James is effective July 27th, and Blake will be effective August 24th.
I'll make that resolution as read by the engineer.
Say it. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to get a resolution to advertise and hire two truck drivers.
Make a resolution we advertise and hire two truck drivers.
Say it. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I do have one question on that topic. You had James Johnson listed as a motor grader operator on the agenda?
Yes.
And you're hiring two truck drivers? I'm assuming you're promoting someone?
I am transferring.
Transferring someone?
Yes.
From a truck to a motor grader?
From backhoe.
Okay, all right. Just wondered.
Yes.
I did too, so I thought.
Being nosy, but...
No, that's fine. The next order I have is permission to order eight new dump trucks and a lowboy tractor off the state bid for next year.
Okay.
I'll make a resolution to order new dump trucks and a lowboy tractor off the state bid list for next year.
Say it.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I'd like to get permission to preorder a patching truck and a side cutter for next year. We have a very long lead time on these, and this is just to get an order in. Of course, order can be canceled, but I need to get my name on it.
Okay. Do you have to put any kind of retainer on it?
No.
So, if we decided in budget not to move forward with that, you could cancel that order?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a resolution to order the patch truck and the side cutter for next year.
Say it.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I'd like to get permission to hire Fred Darren Porter, effective August 11th, pay rate shown on attachment.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to hire Fred Darren Porter, effective August 11th.
Say it.
We have a motion and a second. Floor is open for discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman. And then the next item is permission to hire Dylan Porter, effective August 11th, pay rate shown on attachment.
We hire Dylan Porter, effective August 11th.
Say it.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And the last item I have, Mr. Chairman, is permission to enter into a contract with Thompson Engineering for the CNI on the County Road 17 Bridge Projects.
And you'll need that resolution to make...
Yes, and have the chairman sign.
Okay.
Make a resolution we enter and cut, allow Tony to enter contact with Thompson Engineering and CNI on County Road 17 Bridge Project and allow the chairman to sign it.
Say it. We have a motion and a second. Floor is open for discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Sylvia, would you like to cover the transit or do we...
I will. No, I'll be glad to. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to request a resolution to advertise and hire a road supervisor/dispatcher for the Transit Department.
Okay.
I'll make the resolution to advertise and hire a road supervisor/dispatcher for the Transit Department.
Say it.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I'd like to request a resolution to reclassify Steve Robertson to supervisor with the pay increase.
Okay.
I'll make that resolution as read.
Say it.
We have a motion and a second. Floor is open for discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And that's all for the Transit Department.
Thank you.
Don't we have a motion to rescind?
We didn't need to. We never, we researched it during the break, and we had never accepted that, so we just, we just had to change the job classification rather than rescinding. Okay?
Thank you.
Mr. Giles, if you would, please.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I just got a couple things. I need a resolution for emergency hire temporary for park ranger assistant.
I'll make a motion we hire, for permission to hire temporary park ranger from our already added applications that were received on temporary hire.
Say it. We have a motion and a second. Floor is open for discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Even though we need, I guess, a resolution to advertise to hire full-time park ranger assistant.
I'll make a...
We authorize advertising and hiring a full-time assistant park ranger in Higgins Ferry.
Say it.
We have a motion and a second. Would you, floor is open for discussion. Do you think we need to advertise again, or would you hire from that most recent pool of applicants?
With the, my temporary is from the recent one, so...
But we're, that's what, a month old?
Yeah.
So, we're probably well within the scope, wouldn't we be, Roger, of using those applicants?
Yeah.
So, you wouldn't have to advertise again. You could just hire from that group of applicants?
That's what he's doing now.
Okay.
If y'all would like to amend that resolution.
Yeah. I withdraw my motion.
Yeah, and that's what, that's what we was wondering, so we could actually hire him full-time and not have to, I mean, hire him.
Whoever was the number-two candidate done in the hire...
So, I went through all my resolution and asked for a resolution to hire Cam Craig as a full-time park ranger assistant.
Yes.
Say it. We have a motion and a second. Floor is open for discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
He can start immediately on every...
That's right, and so we do the same process that we did with the last one if it don't work out.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll have that effective tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we'll come down to the commission reports. I'll lead off. Guys, we, we need to talk about work session times. We, we've still got quite a bit of work to do with our, our budget, so I would like for us to continue with our off-Tuesday night meetings that are already on our meetings date schedule, so they've already been advertised. And if you guys would get your normal agenda items in a week early, and we're gonna start trying to tackle those and a small portion of those off-Tuesday night meetings, and then we'll, we will no longer have our 5:00 meetings, at least for the time being. So, our meetings would start at 6:00, and we'll, we'll have our work session on the Tuesday night in between, and they're, they're posted on our website. Do y'all have any issue with that?
And we already have a resolution supporting that.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we...
Same time?
Same time. It's already on the website. It'll be...
So, 6:00 for work session, opposite, and 6:00 for meeting?
Yeah, and on those, those few opportunities that there are more than one Tuesday between the meetings, they're, they're identified on the county website already.
Right. This time.
Okay. Yeah.
But we'll have a budget work session in October.
Yeah, we'll need it this time. That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
That's right.
We won't have a meeting on the 24th.
Right. No meeting on the 24th.
Yeah.
So, do we need to go ahead and advertise since that one may not be on there since it's the fifth one? Or do we know if it's on there on the 31st?
It's, it's a standard resolution we've had already.
Okay. Why didn't know if it would've been the fifth if it was on there? So, just wanna make sure.
Oh, so it won't be?
Okay.
Okay. You handle that from...
Well, what, the reason that we did that historically was to give people essentially a week between the work session and when they would have to come into a meeting, so that they could go do a lot of investigation and know how they were gonna vote. So, it takes up a lot more time, but it is truly, probably, well, I say truly, probably the best way to do it. And we have some people that are having some conflicts with the 5:00 meeting, and everybody's running in here trying to, trying to leave work and get here, and I know it's more difficult on y'all, and I apologize for that, but I think, at least for the time being, it would be better for us to go back to those off-Tuesday night work sessions. All right, so we'll move down. Commissioner Hardy?
If you'll get, the commissioner allowed me a little leniency tonight. I've been sitting in economic development meetings and trying to understand what economic development is about, and just something come across my mind that said economic development can be puzzling, and it is, and there's a, there's a reason I say that, because I'm gonna read this what I, if I try to do it on myself, by myself, I'll probably get more all, trying to get my point across and mess it up, so I'll put it on paper, so maybe we can understand. Says change, change, change. Sometimes, some are excited about it, some are just rather not entertaining the idea. Over the last couple of years, since the announcement of the Alpha Center, there have been rumors, speculations, and talk of how this could impact Chilton County from a revenue and a growth standpoint. I have been contacted by friends, church members, concerned citizens all throughout the county with questions. These are just a few questions that I wanna try to address tonight. Number one question, what is the cost? And the cost of the Alpha Project at its one point in the first phase is $150 million. The second question, who's gonna pay for it? The farmer's registration with the exception of exhibition hall is who's gonna be raising the funds for the Alpha Center. Am I correct, Mr. Cornell? Question three, why do we need an exhibition hall? The reason we need an exhibition hall is to attract more events that in return bring more revenue from tourists. To explain that is when you go to the mountains, or you go to the beach, or you go to wherever you like to go on your vacation, you are the tourist, and you pay for their thing, things that they need, like security, they pay for, you pay for their ambulance service, you pay for their roads, you pay for their infrastructure, you pay for all their economic development, anything that you spend down there, whether you eat, if you rent a camp spot, if you rent a condo, you're paying fees toward that. You're paying fees to help that county and their budget and their, and continue to help flourish and grow. We all do it if you go on vacation. If you don't go on vacation, then you're one of those that don't do it, I'm sure. Why are we purchasing land? To the hat, to have the bulk ownership, to put land in a cooperative district, retail cooperative districts allow us to access fees on the tourism, just like the Bass Pro Shop, so that the burden will not solely be on the citizens of Chilton County. My goal as commissioner, and as well as most of, all commissioners up here, is to make sure that we are, us and our grandchildren and great-grandchildren are not burdened with debt and taxes that are, that were created by, by, just so we could have someplace to shop and eat and entertain our, our events that are coming. That is my goal, because I, I think that, you know, we all know that we had a recent tax here two years ago that I think's working out well. Everybody says we're taxed to death anyhow, and so if you go into other countries, you'll find out you're really not taxed to death if you go into other parts of the country. So, why are we trying, why are we not trying to create, recruit more industries? We have a plan for exit 200. With an industry, you provide packages that have 20- to 30-year abatements that are long-term paybacks to the community. In economic development, there are short-term paybacks. They, they, you see investment with your tax dollars, you see it coming in then. With industry, you're creating jobs, which you're also creating rooftops, which are recreating revenue, which are from, from Avalon Taxes. But when you give somebody a 20- or 30-year abatement, you're not gonna see that come back in in a big hurry, but it's still part of the industry. What about our ambulance service and infrastructure service for the future? The 911 board, as well as several commissioners here, have, have been aware of this and are working diligently to resolve the issues that the nation, that is a nationwide problem, not just a Chilton County problem, it's a Alabama problem, it's a nationwide problem. And so, but my last question, question number seven, why hasn't there been more publicity on Facebook or social media from the commission on these questions? Well, I'll have to answer that myself and give you guys the opportunity if you want to answer that. I personally will not debate issues or investments that the county face on social media. My number's always available. I get calls all during the night, so if you want bothering by calling, if you have questions, I will give you an answer. I recently attended the economic development meeting, and I was a little frustrated because I had questions, and I just fully couldn't understand how recruiting retail investments and investments work. I had made this statement numerous times that most of our citizens have said we need more infrastructure, services, places to eat, or shop without raising more taxes. At the end of the meeting, one of the ladies attending the meeting said to, said to us, "Hold up, I have something for you." Aw. She handed us a box that was a 25-piece puzzle. She said, "When you start to get frustrated, just remember it takes all the pieces of the puzzle to get the return you want on your investment to provide the citizens of Chilton County the things and the services they desire." This is my box. This is my puzzles, 24 pieces. And I got to thinking about that, and it does take a lot of moving parts and other pieces, but if I lose any piece of this puzzle, I cannot complete it. If there's one piece that's missing, then the whole puzzle, I might as well throw it away. So, it takes time, and sometimes we don't understand why this piece has to go in there without knowing what it is. Why this piece, why is, why is this piece made the way it is? Because that's what makes everything fit together. We, if we want the services, if we want the things that, not everybody wants them, and I'm good with that, that's, that's, I'm good with that. If we want the Chilton County to grow and better our future for our children, our grandchildren, then it's a, it's an investment. I'm a businessman, and I, I have made investments that, that I had to take a chance on to, to, and they've been good investments. I have made bad investments, one bad investment. My wife told me not to, and I didn't listen to her, but I listen to my wife now, because it was a bad financial investment. And, and, but now she owns the company, so I don't have any other choice but to work for her. But I'm just saying that I'm very passionate, and I was telling somebody in this, this meeting we were in, I was, and, and, and I said, I need something, you've got to give me something to give our people. You've got to give me something, you know what I mean? And I said, you better be glad this is not political for me, or I would never shut up. Everybody knows me, knows that. If I wanted to, if I get on something, I stay on it. But I wanted to bring that to the public and know that we are working to better and to grow this county. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jimmy.
And thank you for my puzzle, Whitney.
It is true. Anything you do in life is, is like a puzzle. It takes pieces. You build a house, you have to start with a foundation. So, you know, we, we've put our, our foundation of economic growth in Chilton County is, is right now is, is the farm center. And, you know, Jimmy, Jimmy talked about industrial growth. Industrial growth is, is like putting drops in a bathtub, and it'll fill that bathtub up, but it's over a long period of time. So you bring in, you bring in an industry and you give them 20, 25, 30-year tax abatements. And, and most of them expect that now, especially for larger industry, because you're in a competitive market. Every community wants those jobs, and it's who's willing to offer the best location, the best workforce that meets their demographics, and the best tax incentives or incentive package. Sometimes that means parking lots and roads, sometimes it means tax rebates, whatever it is. But you get those people here, or you get those jobs here, and by the time you've gotten them here, you've given away your quick income. So then you're reliant upon their employees and what their employees do. Their employees spend money, they may have presumably better jobs, they spend more money, you get a little bit of sales tax off of their sales, of their money they spend. They build a nicer home, buy more land, they play, pay more property tax. So that's a trickle, that's the drops in the tub. With economic development, if we do this thing right, and, and by God, I promise we've done our due diligence, we've hired every expert that I think money can buy, because we've all been so concerned about making the wrong decisions. But with, when you put all those pieces of that puzzle together with economic development, and you bring in your retail, you're going to have a flood of dollars that come here from tourism, like Jimmy mentioned. And the, the great thing about tourism dollars is that they come here and leave, and they don't need services from you. So just like when you go to Gulf Shores or Orange Beach, you take your money down there and you leave it. And you don't need education for your kids and, and continued things. What you need is just for when you're there. You need to be safe, and you need the medical type things if something happens, or police or whatever. But you leave, and you leave piles of money there, and you go home. We want that here where people are coming in, and our economists have told us that we can expect up to 900,000 people a year to come off, off the interstate for this exhibition center and farm center, and that those people are going to average about $120 a piece per day that they spend in our county. So the, the exhibition hall, that's the, that's going to be the next big thing that we have to do. So we're, we're expecting that exhibition hall, and we, we were supposed to have that, delivered to us today, and, and our person that, that has been doing that new evaluation, the post-COVID evaluation, his flight got canceled, so we all show up at the meeting, and he's still in Chicago. So we didn't hear that today. That's being rescheduled. But we have expectations that that building is going to cost somewhere between 30 and 40 million dollars. And that's a huge number for a county on our side. But to give you some insight into what that means for us, if we spend 30 million dollars out there and we bond it over a 25-year period, we're going to have about a million and a half, million six, a million 600,000 dollar a year bond payment. The potential of collecting that 100, 120 dollars per person on 900,000 people could bring in as much as 8 million dollars into our budget. So we're going to spend a million and a half dollars to collect 8 million dollars. So we're going to net 6 and 1/2 million dollars a year by doing this. That would almost double our general fund budget, not to mention what it does for our hospital board, and if they decided to take that new tax money and pay off the hospital debt, it could pay it off in a fraction of the time that it is now. If they don't choose to go down that path, they can upgrade facilities and build new medical facilities and whatever is within their scope. It's also putting money directly back into the Board of Education, because that sales tax that we have on the Board of Education is active anywhere and everywhere in the county. So for all of that new sales that will happen out there, you've got a direct influence into your Board of Education. So what have we done? We've done our due diligence. We've got a plan in place, and we're collecting the final pieces of this puzzle to really change this county. And like Jimmy said, there are some people in this county that don't want this county to change. I think we have a huge super majority of people who want us to change, maybe not lose the face of who we are, but change our county in a way that we have better hotels, we have better restaurants, or more restaurants, maybe not better, but more restaurant choices, some places to shop. We, we are still number one on the list of a major big-box store that would be an anchor store for retail. We don't have a letter of a commitment from them yet, but these pieces of this puzzle that Jimmy is talking about is the things that we've got to finish doing for them before they'll sign that letter. And they have a list that our IDA has of things that they need from us, and we're trying to click those off. And, and Jimmy, Jimmy asked a question about why do we need to own the land? He talked about one portion of that, being able to, to, to own the land so that we could put the land in a commercial cooperative district, so that we can in essence tax what goes on out there to pay for the exhibition hall. Well, the good thing about that is that our economists tell us that 80% of the revenue out there will be non-Chilton County residents. So only 20% of that revenue will be coming from Chilton County taxpayers paying an additional fee. And that 80% will be people that are coming in from out of town, whether they be just driving through on the interstate, or coming here for the exhibition hall or the farm center. So in a lot of ways, that's going to be paid for by, by non-resident money. The other thing about why are we buying all of this land? We're going to have a, a lot of things come out there. We're going to have hopefully eight to 10, maybe 12 different restaurants. We're going to have hopefully four new hotels just right off the bat. We're going to have shopping, and all of those people need a specific-sized acreage. And what we want to do is accumulate it all, put it into that retail cooperative district so that we can assess a fee, tax, whatever you want to call it, out there. And remember, it's still in the county, so you can, unless it's annexed by Clayton, and we, we'll go down that road later, but right now it's still in the county. So even with a fee, it would be cheaper than the city of Clayton, depending on what the fee is assessed at. But we'll, we'll collect the fee, it'll pay for it, but we'll be able to re-divide the ownership of that property to fully utilize that property to its best value. So you might have a 10-acre parcel of land out there that you wind up with three different ownerships on, and you don't want one guy to take over all of that and then him have to sell what he doesn't use, when we have a developer that has a plan that, that will put the right people in there that will generate the, the most tax dollars.
I think there's one more thing I'd add to that, Mr. Attorney. And the, the way that we understand it's, when, when? Well, the way I understand it, if I may say, that it's going to be 12 to 18 months prior, I mean, from the time that Alpha completes, completes construction, or is it?
Starts.
Starts construction and our event calendars, correct? So that's when they back up that far and start their construction on these facilities right there, because you don't want them to get built and not have nothing come, you know, have all this ready and say, all right, nobody's here because they're not ready to build this, which makes sense. Another business, uh, uh, business, great business decision, so.
Yeah. We're, we're working diligently to make sure that we're doing the right things with taxpayers' money. All right, you have anything else, Mr. Hardy?
No, thank you for your time. I thank you for.
I took over more, more of your time.
That's okay.
Than I should have. Commissioner Bone, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Commissioner Hadley?
No, sir.
Commissioner Kelly?
No, sir.
Commissioner Mann?
No, sir.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes. Each of y'all have a packet I gave you with the two companies that were, that were bidding on the storm shelters, or quoting on them, and they came back the same thing, double-checked them. Because I thought I left something out of the specs. And Ms. Sylvia and I had already talked, industrial coatings has the best price on them, and I'm going to ask for a resolution that we paint all of them, get this done behind us and finished.
Okay, we have 30,000 that's set aside for that now in that, in the grant, so that would leave us closing the gap with $60,000. Okay, so you have a resolution, let's get a second before, I'm sorry, I'm out of line.
I'm sorry, I second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, floor is open for discussion. So Ms. Sylvia, do you feel comfortable with that other $60,000 if we decided to move forward with finishing all of them?
And being put in this fiscal year?
Yes, ma'am.
I think we'd be okay with that.
I'd just like to put this to bed, and we've been dealing with this for several years.
Been working on this since December, actually.
So you feel confident that everything's in here?
Yep, I checked the paint specs out. Sherwin-Williams and whoever said they give a five-year warranty, Sherwin-Williams says nobody gives a five-year warranty on paint.
And that includes the caulking and everything? So everything's blocked?
Yeah, if you'll look, it's even better caulking than what I expected. They're going to put five inches, or six inches of fiberglass upside with epoxy in it, so if it leaks, and they're going to take the nuts off the inside of all of them and seal the holes. City of Clayton said that's where they found their water problem was, and one of theirs. So.
So we've done, we've done all we could do.
Well, except for the doors. We gotta do something about the doors. Water still goes under the doors. And I've got another subject, just pass this one, and we'll, we'll talk about ADA.
Okay.
Commissioner Williams, one of these contracts plainly says that they're not going to be responsible for cleaning it up where they sandblasted. I don't see that in the other one. Am I overlooking that, or are they going to clean it up?
Neither one, neither one of them were required to clean it.
So we'll have to go back and do some cleaning up.
It's not going to be anything but sand. I'll take my blower down there and blow that off. Nothing hazardous or toxic.
Just clean in with the dirt.
Yeah. So they are going to sandblast these and everything, do it the right way. Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you all to spend that money on and fix them, and you still don't have water running in the door, though? I mean.
Hold on, we have a timeout.
Why don't we have a door fixing table fixing?
Well, I've got people looking into doors, and nobody's come up with a good solution to fix those doors other than totally replace them at the bottom. I got an idea, but I ain't been able the last couple of weeks to go out there and try my experiment, see if it'll work. I think it will.
So before we get too far, we took quotes on this because we had a project under the bid limit. If you add all these things back, and you're going to try to do one big project, you're going to exceed the bid limit, and this is not a bid, this is a quote.
Okay, so let's just stop and rescind and put it out for bid.
Or you could do a project now and do another project, since they're not, they didn't like in a construction where you bid an electrical, inflammatory masonry on the same product site. These are different projects, but you do the treatment with different projects and different budgets. If you, if you want to try to.
Well, I didn't, I didn't send them out as bids, but they knew they were bidding. Neither one of them knew anything about the other. I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, but it's a technical issue.
Yeah.
If you try to bundle this together and exceed $50,000, you need a bid.
This can't come under an emergency.
It isn't.
Sitting out there a long time. That might be a stretch.
Or, I'm sorry, it's an emergency.
Is service repaint what?
The three.
The three that we had talked about.
Yeah, but you're.
The price, the price is for all 16 on the best quote.
So let me just visit this for a minute. Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir.
I know that we've been dealing with this for three years now, trying to get this done, trying to get somebody to get spanks, paint, paint specs on it. So I feel like it's an emergency, whether I feel like it or not, what the law says about it, that's the question.
Well, you all have the authority to declare that. If you want to stand on that resolution of declaring this to be a state of emergency, you, y'all will have to vote to be able to do that.
I don't, I can't, I, I can't tell you that, Jimmy, that is.
Oh, okay, I'm good with it.
I, I wouldn't feel, personally, I wouldn't feel comfortable calling that an emergency, unless you could say in some way that it was going to cost us a lot more money.
Well, we don't get these things painted, we have more storms, it's going to be somebody's emergency, and they ain't going to be mine this time.
Yeah, but we can do these three and put these others back out for bid, and we could do a resolution to accept this, this, this bid. And I won't tell what it is, because if we do go out for bid, we don't need this to, to be in somebody else's hands.
My point of, my point of being an emergency, we got these things leaking water inside of them. If we get lightning strikes to ground, who's going to be responsible for those that get electrocuted?
My question too is, we not going to get this price just on three, Allen?
No. If we do them all, we're going to save.
Do what?
It'll cost us 100, it'll cost us 17,000 more.
About a thousand dollars, at least a thousand dollars a piece more if we don't do them all.
Look, we could, we could put this out for bid, we could do a resolution right now to put it out for bid. We could have that bid back before our next meeting, which is the 14th of next month, and then we wouldn't have to explain to the, to the auditors or the Attorney General if it got that far, that we thought this was an emergency.
Because nobody knows how much this is for us right here, how much the total is, so that's good, because we haven't disclosed how much that these bids are. So let, you're right, so we can do that.
I, I would actually go to the point, I would say, let's collect these and give them back to Alan.
Uh-huh.
Right now.
That's right.
So that we don't let somebody else's quote interfere with a bid.
That's right. Looking back at you, it ain't no motion.
Let's, let's do that.
I'll rescind my second. You want to rescind your motion right now?
I withdraw the motion.
Do you want to make a motion to?
I believe we put the 12 shelters out for bid as I have specced them.
Okay.
Okay, will you work with Roger to make sure that we've got the bid requirements in there, and y'all get that out ASAP?
Specced doors too, when you specced them?
They don't do doors. This is going, this fabrication. Doors are going to have fabrication.
Is it water under it?
I said, I got an idea on the door, but I just ain't been able to get out there in the last two weeks to do it. Hopefully, I can move around a little better next week.
So we've got a motion. Do we have?
A second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? If you're not in all the favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And we have several storm shelters that apparently are not ADA compliant. We don't have a entryway for handicap wheelchairs. And I don't know why it didn't come to my attention when I was at Union Grove, and this young lady back here brought it to my attention the other day. There's a small pad in front of every storm shelter, pretty much. Very few of them have a walkway, a concrete walkway. We need, we got to get that fixed.
But all of them are like that, right?
I think Union Grove Two has got a walkway.
Any of the new ones we've done in 2011, Grand or eighty-eight.
Thank you.
From the storm shelter to the road.
Oh, so the ones prior, so how many do you think we have to do?
Uh, Union Grove One, West Chilton would probably, there's not.
West Chilton is down the hill.
There's down the hill, we got to do something with Chilton.
West Chilton is going to need something besides that.
Enterprise One is probably going to need a little more.
Why don't we just put this out for bid to get the sidewalks?
Well, we got to have somebody, and I think that's what Alan's going to ask for tonight, permission to, to work with Derek and Tony to go out there and figure out what we do need so we can.
In which direction, because all of them's not going to be the same size. You take West Chilton, West Chilton's is down in a hole. They don't need what Union Grove's going to need. They're all going to need a little bit of difference.
Well, why don't, why don't you do, take that on this, and I know you've been working on these anyway, work with these two guys, Tony and Derek, and y'all figure out how each one needs to be fixed, and then we'll specc them and build.
Those bids, since those, those three shelters, the ones we're talking about are different. The painting, on that spec now for those paintings, I would put the addresses and require them to make sure that theirs are based on those addresses. You do have just multiple kinds of shelters out there, so they give you a price on all those hundred-person prepaid shelters, some of them are a little bit different. Like Enterprise One isn't going to be painted near the.
Enterprise One's not on the list.
I didn't know what your, what your list was.
All, all of them are pretty much consistently the same is going to be painted, and I didn't know this one here is going to have dirt excavated. I've got that out from around Elizabethville, so I got to go out there and clean that now too.
Allen, didn't you say you just had 12 on the list to be repainted?
Yeah.
Out of 16?
Out of 16.
I think that's right, yeah. Okay, well, if you will, Alan, take that on and come back to.
I'll get Tony to do that. I've had the intersection of 59 and 443 down to talk about, but I, as we talked about that a few weeks ago, there was a car almost rolled up in Tammy Strink's house, well, this past weekend, there was another one almost rolled up in our house, an accident there, and I called Tony, so he is, he suggested it, they've ordered guard rail, they're going to put guard rail up there. Next one's probably going to end up in her house. So that's just the report on that. And I asked John about County Road 34, checking it out. We've got speeders down there, and school buses started, and they're going through a bunch of school bus stops down there, and they're not slowing down. Other thing was the ambulance service. As some of you may or may not know, I've been talking to Kyle at RPS, and I had the pleasure of experiencing one of their rides a week ago. Not to be, and I won't have it happen anytime again in the near future. But he's given some figures here, and I didn't get a chance to make copies, so, but it's basically what I feel like we need to do is come up with some kind of subsidy for the ambulance service. This thing's been kicked around, I've been hearing this for years with. service, this thing's been kicked around, I've been hearing this for years with nine-one-one contract for ambulance, and nothing gets done, and, uh, they got three proposals from them, and like I told you just last meeting, COVID money, that's a rescue act money, I'll pay for it.
Well, Mr., how do we discuss this, though?
I don't know, but I, I think if we're gonna subsidize the ambulance service, we need to clear it out for bid.
That's fine.
Well, and, so, uh-
We've got, we've got, uh-
Yes.
Thanks.
As a member of the ambulance contract community, we have, yeah, we cleared out our, uh, request or proposal, or a bid on it, uh, and we have those numbers, but in the past, when those were brought up, those numbers were a little high, and everybody coming, they're out, we're away from it, so those, it's already done, every, every bit of the labor's already done, all the numbers are already done, we had a whole committee set up for this, and we spent months working on and creating a spec, a spec sheet, saying, hey, this is what we request, all the companies that are around, we're able, uh, come to meetings, tell us, hey, you know, what they thought about it, and everything was just a, uh, a proposal for them to bid on it, uh, and we had some pretty strange things in there that obviously we didn't expect anybody to meet, but we had a criteria to grade those, I suppose, as a response time was this criteria versus having a ventilator on every truck was not really a priority, we, we did request it. So those numbers are already out there, those, everything with RPS are already out there, there's a, a large book with every idea that we had with their, uh, response to it, including numbers.
How many quotes did you get back?
We only received one, which is RPS, and we gave options to every ambulance, so they were, it was very well advertised, very well known, so Derek?
So, so I found out at five forty-five tonight that Commissioner Mims has been working on this, uh, Commissioner Williams has been working on this, Commissioner Hardy has been working on this, and I've been working on this through, through nine-one-one since last February when we lost our, our second ambulance service in the county, and what I've asked, and I, I didn't know you were coming with this tonight, I apologize.
But you don't want no action, no action this night?
I, I would ask, 'cause y'all don't share that-
No.
Because we, we're gonna have to go to market, uh, Sheriff and I talked last Thursday or Friday about getting a group together, and Butch Billingsley has been in that, uh, with the nine-one-one committees, with the commissioners and a few other people, not to do anything formally, but just to sit around a table and talk about what we can do. Now that there's money out there that was not available in February when we went out for a request for a proposal, some of these other ambulance companies may be interested, and I, I'm not trying to take anything away from RPS, 'cause they've been here, and I love people that've been loyal to us, but we, a lot of the things that we put in that first requirement may have scared some other folks off, but I think we need to collectively have a conversation, and we need working with nine-one-one, 'cause we, we as a commission has historically given them the, uh, this under their jurisdiction, to work through nine-one-one with our help to come up with a solution and less fund the gap. So, you know, there, there's the option of going into the ambulance service yourself, or, or funding somebody and supplementing them to provide ambulance service. The reality is, you may not care a lot about that until it's you that, that needs an ambulance, you know, or it could be your kids or your wife, and where we are now with our response time, it's not, it's not that it's a life and death issue, they're just not gonna get there anytime.
And to add to that, if I will, Mr. Chairman, is that a lot of these ambulance services are, are, provide, base their business on surrounding counties, other counties providing service, and if you have a county that's bigger than yours and decides to not use this ambulance service or more, a particular ambulance service, then that puts you in a situation where you could be without an ambulance service also, and that really is what pirked me up to start really getting the information, I actually have a meeting Friday with some individuals about addressing that issue if it was ever to come up, you know, in our county, you know what I mean, 'cause you could potentially be sitting without an ambulance at all.
I, I think where we are, though, is we have a lot of people chasing the same rabbit, and we need to-
Get on the same team.
We need all get in the same place where we, 'cause we, we got to come up with a solution.
And just, just know that we are, we are working on this, and this is very important to me, and, and anybody in this room is important to, anybody in this county, so.
The, the reality with that first request for proposal that came back to nine-one-one was that at that time, nine-one-one did not have the money available for that supplement, and nine-one-one said, let's, let's go renegotiate, let's, let's start easing off of some of these requirements and figure out what we can work with, and, and they've been working on that, they actually have a meeting scheduled the end of this month, so, uh, it's something that a lot of people have been working on, I just think we all need to sit down in the same room and, and work, work on the same problem, and-
I agree.
'Cause it's, it's a big problem.
I agree.
Yeah, Kyle said he'd be glad, that's the chairman of RPS, and he'd come sit down and tell us whatever he needed, you know, put out there for us.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you, and trying to pull something together in the next week for us to sit down with the, the nine-one-one committee so that we're not running, running out in front of them on something that they'd been working on for over a year. You okay, got anything else?
Yeah, uh, back in, uh, on June the sixth, Wade Watley, the city sewer and water chairman, brought us a letter, and I saw him this week and asking if he got any kind of response back in his letter, and I thought that was kinda odd, since he formerly, the city's formerly said they would provide water and sewer to the farm center, and they haven't even been given anything, so they can start planning for their three, four, five million dollar project to put sewer out there, so who would know and know why?
It's on the front page of the advertiser, all the answers you need, they, this man right here, Joanna wrote about, so, uh, was that, that one you?
I didn't write that one.
So, uh, everything's in there, about the sewer and the water, I mean, we've got everything we need, uh, the county's gonna provide sewer, water, fire EMS, and police to the farm center.
So the city, cities, the partner with this county's not in it anymore, period?
They chose to, they chose to-
No, they didn't choose, no.
Absolutely, they did.
No, they did.
So, you're saying that, that, that city, we're not gonna ask the city to provide water to, and sewer to the Alpha Center?
So what's, what's the point of, of getting water and sewer to the gate if you don't get it any further?
No, no, hold on, I'll back up a different level on that, so with a meeting with the city, it was told to me directly, just sitting here, so, that the city would not provide sewage and water to the retail cooperative district unless they could annex it, and in that same meeting, the mayor said that he wouldn't annex it without keeping the tax money, and without that tax money, we can't pay for the exhibition hall, and without the exhibition hall, retail won't come, so it's part of that puzzle deal, so, he, he won't provide retail, and this is the, this is the catch-all, there's a law on the books in Alabama that says that utility boards can't cross each other without a mutual agreement, so if the mayor runs utilities to the farm center, he's, he's got us blocked at that point, whether, whether anybody realizes this or not, to providing sewage and water to retail, 'cause we can't cross his lines, and at that point, then he has the ability, he, not even the ability, we have to allow him to annex, and we don't need him to annex. For one thing, when it's in the county, under the current, um, tax laws, it's two cents instead of one, so we're gonna lose a cent of our revenue to allow him to annex, and then secondly, if he's not willing to share in those costs, and he said he wasn't, told me that, he's not willing to share in those costs, then none of this works, so we can't allow them to provide sewage and water if we're gonna have retail that pays for the exhibition hall.
Well, I thought there was, the corporate district could set additional fees in that retail district, make up for that.
Where, where are you gonna put them, though, those fees would go on top of an already ten cent sales tax?
Well, that's one of the things that was touted about doing this, of course, setting the corporate district, they set fees, that's why we wanted on the property.
Yeah, but you're gonna lose your retail if you go above ten or eleven cents, eleven cents is about your max.
So what was the deal about putting the corporate district adding fees on top of it then?
So, so today, in, in the city of Clayton, if you spend tax dollars, sales tax, if you buy something, you're gonna pay one cent for the county, and if I'm not mistaken, it's three cents for the city, isn't that right? So if you take their three cents out, that they're unwilling to commit to a bond payment, if you take their three cents out, then you have the ability for that cooperative district to go, alright, you got your two out there in the county, and you can add up to two more cents without it exceeding their sales tax level that will go toward the bond, so you catch, you catch an automatic penny with the county, and then you can assess a fee of up to two without raising the sales tax above the city of Clayton's collection fee, and so what we-
In other words, we're going in the water and the sewage business.
We've been in the water business.
We're going in the sewer, now, Chilton Water is.
That is, that is an arm of the county commission, that is an authority, supported by-
We're going in the sewage business now.
Yes, that's the plan.
Have you had a civil engineer tell you that's a smart thing to do?
We're working with civil engineers right now to have that evaluated.
Well, civil engineers I've been talking to said it is not wise and advisable for a county to go into it, it's not, it's a dead-end street.
Not for a county, but for a locality is very different.
So where's the sewage gonna be dumped?
We're working on it, it may not have to be dumped, it may be such a small amount, it can be, uh, collected in an encapsulated pod system.
So, as it stands now, the farm center's totally on the county to pay for.
That's kinda where we've been for-
A long time.
Uh, most of this year.
Not to pay for?
No.
Really? Who's paid for anything else out there?
The hundred and fifty million dollars is not-
Farmers Federation's paying for that.
Funny, they hadn't, I ain't seen, I ain't seen any-
Well, I mean, but that's them-
They paid anything up so far, we paid out a lot of money.
Towards the farm center?
Toward that project out there.
So has Alpha. So has Alpha.
So Alpha's already spent over two million dollars.
You'll have to go ask Alpha, they, get them to show you their records.
But they do have, but the way I understand it, they already paid over two million dollars.
This year.
But, but, but like I said before in, in my presentation, that, uh, we didn't want this to be the burden of the taxpayer, we gotta subsidize that for, uh, for our corporate district, you know what I mean, so-
We gotta create-
We're gonna put a sewer system in, we're putting it on the backs of the taxpayers.
Our, our engineer tells us that the tap fees and the monthly service fees can be constructed in a way that's competitive and will pay for the upkeep of it, not to mention the fact that there's some bonds available, uh, not bonds, grants, that will almost entirely pay for it.
And also, just so, in case this question, we're also working on fire and, uh, fire and rescue service out there for that project, too.
Yeah, I heard that down at the IDA today.
Well, I was right, you were there today, so, yeah, just-
We had a very nice, you know, person come in a few weeks ago and wrote us a check for two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and, uh-
That has to be raindrops.
And that's to build a fire department rescue on Siah with.
If anybody else would like to make a donation.
The only, the only other thing I've got about that was, he asked for an answer, two months, we didn't give them a, a proper answer, I don't think, read it in the newspapers, not a proper answer to a, a letter.
Our, uh, our attorney, uh, the IDA's attorney, Preston Bolt, he's, uh, he's working on something official, we were supposed to have it today, but something came up, and it'll be presented to him within, hopefully this week, so they'll have everything right where they need it.
I don't get the paper, so I didn't know anything about it, to be honest with you.
Hey, and neither he showed it to me. Only other thing I have is the, uh, property, that's the tri, triangle properties, who set those prices? I asked a question last week about it being paid above the appraised amount, well, uh, who set the prices that we have paid for that property in the beginning?
The landowners.
The market.
The market, the landowners, their real estate agents.
So each, each landowner?
Negotiated their own deal, these negotiations have been going on for, some of them up to two years now.
Oh, I knew that.
And there ain't nobody in this room that they had land out there and said, hey, I think it's valuable to the Alpha Center, and I'm gonna ask the seventy-five thousand dollars acre, wouldn't accept seventy-five thousand or fifty thousand.
Ain't no question about that, the food turned away when Alpha's over, too.
And I-
I just wanna know, I just wanna know-
Yes, sir.
Who offered the money, and I got my answer. Will we adjourn?
I'll second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, needing adjourned.